All right, folks, we will call for order this meeting in the Bridgeton City Council on September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. If you would all please rise and join us in the fledge of the lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. The clerk will now call the roll.
Mrs. Abrams, here. Mr. Graham, here. Mr. Hines, here. Mrs. Luke, here. Mr. Norris, here. Mr. Purcell, here. Mr. Patel, here. Mr. Zimmer, here.
We have all eight members of the council here tonight. Thankful for that. We will now go on to item D, the agenda approval.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion made and seconded for approval of tonight's agenda. Further comments, questions, deletions, additions? Councilmember Zimmer.
Yes, I'd like to put a discussion item on, after number nine, I guess it'd be nine A, just a quick statement I'd like to make. And if anybody wants to respond to it, they can, but I just.
Second.
Thank you.
So I just listed as comments from Councilmember Zimmer.
Okay, yes.
That's the way you want to do it?
No, let's put it as a pension, let's put it as a pension discussion.
Pension discussion, okay.
Sorry about that.
I'm sorry. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sustaining, motion carries, we'll add nine A, pension discussion. Further comments, questions? Saying none, those in favor of the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sustaining, that motion carries. We are now down to item E, which is the public portion of tonight's meeting. This is the opportunity for any member in the audience here tonight, come to the judge council or the administration. Does anybody have any comments? We didn't have any cards, I don't believe, did we? Anyone comment? Once, twice. All right, we'll move on. We're down now to approval of the minutes of the September second, two thousand and twenty meeting.
Move and approve.
Motion's made and seconded for approval of the September second, two thousand and twenty council meeting minutes. Questions, suggestions, changes, additions? Saying none, those in favor of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sustaining, motion carries. I have before you one appointment tonight, it's actually over to the auxiliary commission of beautification, Mary Murkowski. She had to get off the actual beautification commission for term limits. And a lot of times then they shift on to the auxiliary commission, but that is something that we do appoint.
Motion for approval?
Correct.
Motion's made and seconded for approval of Mary Murkowski to the beautification commission auxiliary. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sustaining, motion carries. Thank you all very much. Mary's done a great job over there with beautification. She's a very big asset for them. All right, the only other announcement I've got, since we have a full council tonight, we could actually go all the way to a double reading of bills that are introduced, they could actually go to adoption tonight, since we have a full council and they all approved. We are down to item H, which is resolution R dash twenty dash oh seven to accept COVID nineteen money from St. Louis County. What this is, and you all have, the resolution was added to your place tonight, and I think I had sent it out in email. What this is, St. Louis County finally agreed to the disbursement of about forty-seven million dollars to municipalities throughout St. Louis County. It's part of the CARES Act, the county received a hundred and seventy-eight million dollars in CARES Act money, which is federal money that came in. They've had some issues regarding that, and it took a while for us to finally convince the county executives that municipalities, because we have not received much, if any, assistance in terms of the pandemic and trying to fight it. This way, we can receive some funding for the city of Bridgeton to help us, if you want to say offset some of our costs, really not that, it's to help us, and we incurred some additional costs because of COVID. It was mostly this will be for the police department, because they did go around and enforce such things as the mask, or the closing times of some bars. If you remember earlier in the pandemic, businesses had to close because of their restaurant, and so forth like that. Police did a good job of monitoring that for us. Those costs are reimbursable out of the federal CARES Act, which is what this money is. Councilmember Purcell.
Would you like Councilmember Zimmer or the council president to read the resolution, or would you like himself to do it as the executive or finding?
Either one of you two, I think we have Councilmember Zimmer.
Right.
Councilmember Purcell, you want to do it then, as the executive and finding commission.
Do we need just the heading, or do we need to whereas Paul has read also?
I don't think you have to do the whereas, just the heading.
Just the motion to approve, Paul needs to know.
Okay.
So we're looking for a motion to approve the resolution, hang on one second. Is there a motion on the table?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve resolution R twenty dash oh seven. It's all yours, now, Councilmember Purcell.
A resolution requesting that St. Louis County distributes forty-seven million dollars of CARES Act funds on a per capita basis to the municipalities within the county to be used for eligible expenses. Authorizing the mayor of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri to accept CARES Act funding and execute a municipality relief program funding agreement, and confirming agreement to indemnify and hold harmless St. Louis counties from such distribution.
Very good. Further discussion? Councilmember Patel.
Do you have an idea what that means when they say provide by population would be to Bridgeton?
For the city of Bridgeton, it's roughly in the neighborhood of about seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Yeah, I think it was in the cover memo that was sent out. Councilmember Zimmer.
Yeah, I was just wondering, it said something about receiving half of the seven hundred and ninety-four of the half, or is that the?
You receive half initially, when you make the application, and you start turning in documentation. And then you receive the other half after they've gone through some review by the council to make sure that, or, I'm sorry, the county, to make sure that everything that you've turned in is appropriate and eligible for reimbursement. And then after they've done their complete review, you get all one hundred percent of the reimbursement that you're eligible to receive.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Further comments, questions? Saying none, those in favor, those in favor take the roll, Paul, I'm sorry, the court, call the roll.
Mrs. Abrams, aye. Mr. Graham, aye. Mr. Hines, aye. Mrs. Luke, aye. Mrs. Norris, aye. Mr. Patel, aye. Mr. Patel, aye. Mr. Zimmer, aye.
By your vote of eight to nothing, you approved resolution R dash twenty dash oh seven to accept COVID nineteen money from the county. Passage of this will help to expedite the receipt of those funds for the city of Bridgeton. Thank you. We are down to item J, permits waivers in the fields. Councilmember Zimmer.
Sir, I'd like to make a motion to approve the sign variance for Romanek Jewelers at thirty-four thirty McElvee Road.
Second. Motion's made and seconded for assigned variance for Romanek Jewelers, excuse me, at thirty-four thirty McElvee Road. Councilmember Zimmer.
Yes, this came with a favorable recommendation from the design and review board, there was one N A, and what that committee member mentioned was she thought it was a little bit big. I don't really have a problem with the sign, so I'll be voting for it.
Very good. Further comments or questions? Saying none, the clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Graham, aye. Mr. Hines, aye. Mrs. Luke, aye. Mrs. Norris, aye. Mr. Patel, aye. Mr. Patel, aye. Mr. Zimmer, aye. Mrs. Abrams, aye.
By your vote of eight to nothing, you've approved the sign variance for Romanek Jewelers at thirty-four thirty McElvee Road. On to item K tonight, emergency contracts. Item five, Councilmember Zimmer again.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve Stan Gelman graphic design for design portion of the two thousand and twenty-one Bridgeton calendar.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the motion to approve Stan Gelman graphic design for design portion of the two thousand and twenty-one Bridgeton calendar. Councilmember Zimmer.
Yes, he has submitted his bid for seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-five. I'm voting for this, but I was curious why we didn't go out for three votes. So if somebody could say something, that's fine, if not, that's fine as well. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Very good. Mr. Bookout, would you like to explain the question that Councilmember Zimmer raised?
So when we send this out, we have used Gelman's for the last few years, but we do open it up to others, and now we put one that we did receive on the design. Of course, we received numerous ones on the printing, but the only bid we received on the design was from Gelman.
Okay, I see.
So he did solicit?
Yes.
Very good. Further comments or questions? Saying none, those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sustaining, that motion carries. We are down to item six, Councilmember Zimmer.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve Print Group Inc. for the printing of the two thousand and twenty-one Bridgeton calendar.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the contract for Print Group Inc. for the printing of the two thousand and twenty-one Bridgeton calendar. Councilmember Zimmer.
Yes, they submitted their quote, they have, there was numerous ones on there, probably seven or so, and they came up with three thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars, nineteen cents. Again, I had a question, I don't, I'm just curious, did, we had forty-five hundred we're arguing, or do you think we really need that many? My question, but I'll be voting for that as well, in favor.
Mr. Bookout, would you like to explain that question, answer it?
Absolutely. As you recall, this is the first year that we are not sending every household, and they're going to be picked up in city facilities. And we did reduce it by quite a bit, but taking a look at the numbers, half that are federally recommended this amount. And we're going to watch it carefully this first year that we've changed the program, and we certainly adjust next year based on the numbers that are picked up in this next calendar year.
Good deal, thank you.
Good question, thank you.
Councilmember Patel.
Can we run out a short amount of time, can we order more?
We probably could, they usually they like to do that once they set that up on the press, there's an extra cost, it's a little bit higher. Once they stop and break it down and break.
Always an excellent program, without a deal, but it's all come out by March.
Yeah, and it could be something we look at. But again, for the audience's sake as well, remember, we are not mailing this year, strictly picking up here at city hall, off the direct center, or possibly out of AMAC, I'm not sure, all city facilities is where they can pick up their calendars. So, the motion is to approve the kind of print group for the printing of the calendar, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sustaining, that motion carries. We are down to perfection of new bills, Councilmember Graham.
Move for second and final reading of bill number six-two-five-one, second.
Motion's made and seconded for second reading of bill sixty-two fifty-one, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sustaining, motion carries, Councilmember Graham.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, application number twenty dash P C dash oh six for the zone approximately, approximately five point nine-nine acres of land located at thirty-one seventy Peaky Road from P U D plan, single-family residence, residential development to P U D plan, single-family residential development amended to offer a thirty-lot detached, single-family development. Move the number six-two-five-one to become ordinance number?
Twenty dash nineteen.
Twenty dash nineteen, second.
Motion's made and seconded for bill sixty-two fifty-one to become ordinance twenty dash nineteen. Further comments or questions, Councilmember Patel.
Yes, I think I talked about this last week. I'm not disagreeing with a builder, like a great builder, going on homes there, I think he can go to same home, on existing same lots that are there. Nice, larger fifty-foot lot, which is the smallest lot we have in more than one. Now, we really need to step down, I mean, that forty-foot lot, they squeeze this way more home in that area right there. I think it's just getting a little greedy, with how many they can squeeze out, or pop it, and not for the benefit of the neighborhood. All of you driven down Peaky Road, saw what happened up the street, I mean, two-story house, fifty feet, and I walk, you know, like, totally ruined the character of the neighborhood on Peaky Road, where it's all Arton Tony, and when forty-foot step back, we all just last meeting past, you know, Dover on Finally Road, where we maintain one, one-inch minimum on Finally Road, it allows, you know, have extra areas, back area, F law lot, I have no problem with the extra lot backing off in a certain area, but I think they should not put that in the actual front, and make sure that it's not pushing, you know, keep it as a care for the neighborhood. I think squeeze that anywhere a lot, on this year, we definitely, a lot of people know, we're going to go on.
Councilmember Graham.
Well, I guess one of the duties of looking at something twice over the period of two weeks, is you have time to look at it carefully, reconsider, and this is one that I looked at carefully, contemplated, after you go through the plans and so forth, and and I understand the concerns about the density, but just being around it, convenience, couldn't real estate that as the trend. People just don't want the big yards anymore, and are not interested in doing yard work, they're interested in a nice home, with a lot of amenities. And just going, you know, and doing things, and the big yard seems to be something that they're kind of out of style at this point. I look at what they, the reputation of Fisher and Pritchell, they build excellent homes, I've looked at the plans here, they look very good. I think this is going to be an opportunity for the city and the thirty, thirty new families to come to Bridgeton. I think they're going to be well taken care of, the more I look at this, the more I like it, I'm going to go for it, thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? Oh, I wonder where the building name is coming from. Councilmember Norris.
I'm far this, I feel like, I just want to remind, these are villas, these are, you know, choices for the community. You know, especially that two-bedroom, two-bath villa, I said, I think some of our people that want to downsize, I think this is going to be a popular, popular choice. And again, the key word is choice, we have a lot of choices in the city of Bridgeton, and this is just another one to take for our property, I said, for this builder to come in to an area, I think he definitely has to know his buyers, and so I would think he would not be coming in if he did not have the projection of selling these. And also, taking a drive out in Baldwin, if you go off the Sulphur Road, they are very similar type homes are being built. So I just want to say, this is the choice of the new homeowner, so I'm voting yes to this.
Councilmember Purcell.
Thank you, Mayor. I share the concern of Councilmember Patel, you know, changing the character of the neighborhood by moving down to the forty-foot lot. And I think that is a valid concern. However, like my co-councilor Moore too, I've kind of taken a second look at this over the past couple of weeks, and and looking at the design, I think it's good, to echo the sentiment of what Councilwoman Norris said, I think she hit it on the head with, you know, if the buyers don't like it, they're not going to buy. But I think through their market research, they've seen that this is what people want. They want the bigger, nicer house, the smaller yard, you know, and one of the things I think that the gentleman, the applicant mentioned when he came up last time, is they're going to include a maintenance package, which I think would be good, especially for, you know, some people who are maybe looking to downsize, maybe, or even a younger family, who just doesn't want to be bothered with that, you know, that extra responsibility, that maintenance. They want to go out and do the thing, so I think that the home builder is impeccable, I think that this would be good for Bridgeton right now. It's just a vacant lot, it actually sits right across from where my office is, and every day when I pull out, I look at a vacant lot. So I'm excited to see, I think this will be a change in the character of the neighborhood, but overall, I think it will be a positive one, so I would be voting for it.
Further comments or questions from council? Councilmember Hines.
Sorry, I did have a constituent from Moore, Paul, contact me with the traffic concerns, and this might be something we'll have to address in the future. But what's the subdivision on the west side of Peaky?
Oak Hill.
Oak Hill, Mayor, he thought an additional stop sign might be, you know, something to take a look at here, since there's going to be such an increase in traffic on the east side there with the new development going in, but just a comment, thank you.
Further comments, questions? Saying none, the clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Hines, aye. Mrs. Luke, aye. Mrs. Norris, aye. Mr. Patel, aye. Mr. Patel, aye. Mr. Zimmer, aye. Mrs. Abrams, aye. Mr. Graham, aye.
By your vote of seven to one, you've approved bill number sixty-two fifty-one to become ordinance twenty dash nineteen. Consideration of new bills, Councilmember Norris, bill number sixty-two fifty-two.
Thank you. Move for first reading of bill number six-two-five-two, second.
Motion's made and seconded for first reading of bill sixty-two fifty-two, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sustaining, motion carries, Councilmember Norris.
The ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizes the mayor of city clerk to execute an agreement of substantially in the form of cash, here too, with by state facilities company for the Bridgeway Park Base Three Farm Tour Installation Project, in the amount of fifty-four thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars, with a contingency of ten thousand, eighty-two dollars. Move to suspend council rules for second reading, second.
Motion's made and seconded to suspend council rules to allow for a second reading of bill sixty-two fifty-two. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sustaining, motion carries, Councilmember Norris.
So there is no objection?
No objection, so now you want to do second reading.
Move for second reading of bill number sixty-five-two.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded for second reading of bill sixty-two fifty-two, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sustaining, motion carries, Councilmember Norris.
The ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizes the mayor of city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form of cash, here too, with by state facilities company for the Bridgeway Park Base Three Farm Tour Installation Project, in the amount of fifty-four thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars, with a contingency of ten thousand, eighty-two dollars. Move that bill number sixty-five-two become ordinance number, oh, what a wonderful number.
Twenty dash twenty.
Sorry, incident.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded for bill sixty-two fifty-two to become ordinance twenty dash twenty. Councilmember Norris.
Yes, I just wanted to remind council that this is being paid in real grants for the St. Louis County Park, and we are also supporting the local business, and I am, you'll be voting for it.
Further comments or questions? Saying none, the clerk will call the roll.
Mrs. Luke, aye. Mrs. Norris, aye. Mr. Patel, aye. Mr. Patel, aye. Mr. Zimmer, aye. Mrs. Abrams, aye. Mr. Graham, aye. Mr. Hines, aye.
By your vote of eight to nothing, you've approved bill sixty-two fifty-two to become ordinance twenty dash twenty. Moving on to item nine, bill number sixty-two fifty-three, Councilmember Purcell.
Move for first reading of bill sixty-two fifty-three, second.
Motion's made and seconded for first reading of bill sixty-two fifty-three, Councilmember Purcell. Ready to?
I want to order due to me to blow up, did we?
We didn't vote on it, it's a free deal.
First reading, first reading, okay. Bill sixty-two fifty-three, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, establishing the annual rate of tax levy for the year two thousand and twenty on all real properties within the boundaries of the city of Bridgeton. Providing for the extension of said property tax on the books of the collector by the county clerk, and authorizing the St. Louis County Collector to collect said taxes. Move for bill number sixty-two fifty-three to be placed upon table.
Second, second.
Motion's made and seconded to table bill sixty-two fifty-three, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sustaining, motion carries, you did that well, Councilmember Purcell. Thank you. We are down to item nine A, in addition to tonight's agenda, which was put on by Councilmember Zimmer to discuss pension.
Yes, thank you. This is on our older pension, it's not on the newer pension. I guess I was reading through the October two thousand and sixteen audit that we had, I was looking for a specific number in there, is why I was reading. And I came across several things that, that we probably ought to look at, that I think the council staff should possibly review this and look for recommendations, so unfinished business, I think, I believe, and this is by no means pointing fingers at anybody of what we didn't do, or whatever, I'm just saying, maybe we ought to relook at this, for things that we may have missed in there, or haven't discussed with everybody on it. We just need to make sure we have, we're doing what we can to improve our process and fulfill our obligations. We have acted already on several items, we did put together the commission for pension, we took training, we did several things that they've asked for, but there's some, a couple other things that they wanted us to address as well. It stated in there, some of the things that caught my eye, just real quick, I'm not going to take a lot of your time, was the funded ratio declined from, we were at a hundred percent in two thousand and two, we had a hundred percent funding in the, in our pension. And when they did the report, it was at sixty-seven percent, at fourteen million, and I believe right now, I'm not sure the number, I believe it's around sixteen million unfunded liability. So you can, you can verify that later if you like, but I believe that's what I heard. Something they said in there that caught my eye is, you know, the report says a retirement plan such as ours is insufficiently funded at eighty, it should be at eighty percent, and we should strive for a hundred percent. So they're, they're stating in there, hey, a good plan would be, minimum would be eighty, you know, real good would be a hundred, which, you know, I don't see it being a hundred, you know, they're stating that eighty is a good reference. It also states that we, this is probably most, other than the amount of money we're putting in, this is, this is paramount too. They also state that we have not developed a funding policy. There are no policies or guidelines for the city officials to utilize when making decisions impacting the client's financial conditions. And I could, I could talk a lot on that, but I'm just saying, please go read this on what they're recommending, because there's, there's things, maybe we ought to, you know, there's different ways to approach this, and we could, could look at that for, for how we expect it to be funded. Bridgeton should develop a formal funding policy by ordinance, and they mentioned ordinance to guide the decisions and communicate it funding through intentions to the plan members and public, so that, you know, so the public knows what we're trying to do, as well as our whole plan members, which is us guys, council. There's many additional recommendations to staff and council on what we should be doing in the report. Please reread this report, and let's start a dialogue with the staff and council in maybe the next few weeks sometime. It may be pertinent for, you know, before our major budget review. Remember, council, you are legally the, the plan's trustees, so we're, you know, as you already know, the newer people may not, I'm sure you know that too, we're the trustees on the suspension plan, and, you know, I sure want it to go well, I'd hate to see it. I don't think it'll crash and burn, but I'd hate to see it, I'd like to see it go in the right direction. And that's all I have on it, I'm just asking you to read through this, and then we can maybe look at it later. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Zimmer, for the comments, questions? Saying none, we will move on to the attorney's report.
I have nothing to report, thank you.
Very good. Council communications, we'll start with Councilmember Zimmer.
Holy God, just going right off the bat, I just returned from the classic American road trip, high speed, sixteen hundred miles. I look at it in terms of, just thinking about the first stop with the Henry Ford Museum in Huron, and that chronicles how America built itself up as a, the great superpower we are, and all the benefits we enjoy, and then another stop along the way with the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame in Cleveland. This chronicles for the last seven years how we commented on what we've done, and how we've celebrated. But in between there, there was a lot of chance to talk to folks, the crowds, as you might imagine, were kind of small. So it gave us the opportunity to talk with folks, and I'm just kind of happy to report that I think that the spirit of America is alive and well. People want to get back to work, they're eager to get going and establish something, back to normalcy, but they have a good attitude toward this. There's, there's a lot of work going on, and a lot of things, but the spirit and the willingness to continue is still there, so overall, I came away from that trip So overall, I came away from that trip very, very encouraged. It's good to get out and see a little bit other than what's in your backyard. And I was just happy to have that opportunity and encouraged by what I saw. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Purcell?
Thank you, Mayor. First, thank you everybody that came out tonight. I know everybody's scheduled around this time of the year, with the change of seasons and everything, are a bit stressed. So thanks for taking the time to come out, I appreciate it. Anybody that may be tuning into this meeting online in the future, again, thanks, appreciate you taking an interest in your local government. The only thing that I have tonight is normally, and normally is a word that I think may get thrown around a lot for the next six months, two years, we would have just been coming back from the Missouri Municipal League Conference this, this week, I believe. And because of the current, you know, pandemic, COVID-19, little thing going on, if you ever heard about it, they are doing that conference virtually. They opened it up, they reduced the price significantly to try to get, you know, more delegates to attend, you know, from your living room or your couch. And nationally, the city is doing the same thing this year, their conference later this year in November. And so for anybody that hasn't had an opportunity, who's sitting up here to, to attend one of those in person, I was lucky enough to actually attend in person last year. It's an amazing event. And so they're reducing that price drastically to do a virtual or an online conference. And I would just encourage everybody to take a look at it if your schedule and pocket looks a little less. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Zimmer?
I've talked enough, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Patel?
Okay, yeah, pretty brief. Obviously, I have my shoulder replaced one day for the day of recovery of recuperation. I'd also like to say happy birthday to my co-councilman, Scott Zimmer here, his birthday today. I won't tell you how old he is. He is younger than me because I'll be on Medicare next month. I'll let you all, you'll find, really, yeah.
Very good. We're glad you're on the road to recover. Councilmember Hein?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to wish that happy birthday also. That's great you made it this far. And Bob, I wish you luck with your recovery on your shoulder there. So, and thank you constituents for being in here. Thank you, Mayor Masadi, for filling in for Chief for tonight. And thank you for talking, thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Luke?
Thank you, Mayor, I don't have anything to say.
Very good. Councilmember Abrams?
I have one question. When we did the budget, did we not take out their travel or expenses for?
It was, it was all, yeah, you had to pay for it yourself.
Oh, okay. I knew we did something with that.
That's what it was.
Other than that, I have nothing.
Councilmember Norris, can we count on you?
She certainly, yes. You know, guaranteed. I want to thank the Parks Department, Mary Lane, and senior coordinator and staff and the Pet and Fire Department and Bridgeton League, the partnership of the Kiwanis Club. We hosted a scale-down senior barbecue, approximately fifty people. That was last Thursday, September tenth at Venus. All thank you for caution calls. We had music, food, friends, ice cream trucks, we got it each. Fun for all, some kind of normal. Attended my first personnel commission, a very good information. Great representatives from our city residents and volunteers. Appreciated their knowledge and recommendation. And I do appreciate, thanks for supporting the Fisher and Crystal Development. I know quite a few people are looking at that, Ash, Ashwin, the two-bedroom, too, they were thrilled. I made copies for the floor plan, so he might have orders already before anything hap, you know, they even get struggled in. I do have a comment to be made, I just, I'm just repeating. I said my scale last week, but I guess I'm going to scale again. Our city is facing difficulties and unprecedented times. And I hope our employees and residents realize and respect our decisions council will need to make. We need your support and patience in solution. We decide, some may be temporary, some may be permanent, but our goal is to future of Bridgeton. What sacrifices will be, will we have to make? We don't know. Remember, we are all in this together. Ultimately, the choice we make is death for all of Bridgeton. I'm finished.
Thank you, Councilmember. Going on to department reports, we'll start with Parks, Mr. King.
This past Saturday, Mark, the end of our outdoor pool season, we had the dog swim, called it the food plunge. We had about fifty dogs in attendance, and they had a great time. The water was a little chippy there at the beginning, but it turned out very nice. And then also a reminder, we're having a shred event this Saturday at the rec center. That'll be from eight a.m. until twelve p.m. And residents can bring up six boxes of papers to be recycled. And we're putting that on, partnering with human, Tom's feet international realty on that. So thank you to them for providing the trucks. Should be a good day until eight to twelve this Saturday at the rec center.
Very good. Councilmember Abrams has a question or comment?
Yeah, I do. I just, when they ask you, do they shred this there? Do they have like a big truck or something, they do the shredding when you drop it off?
Yeah, that's a good question, yeah, they shred it right there on site. Still have the shred truck there.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Further comments or questions, council? Seeing none, we have with us Major Masadi tonight, taking the place of Chief, who's out on vacation tonight. So glad to have you, Mark.
Thank you. Glad to be here and see everybody's healthy. Just a couple of things for the Chief. National night out's going to be October the sixth at the rec center. Their, this year's going to be a little bit different. We're doing a hot, sticky dog drive-through. Pet and Fire Department's going to help get the police officers to cook hot dogs. And we're doing it in a drive-through form in circles. So people will be able to pull up and looking at here to the COVID restrictions and compliance and make sure that everybody's safe. Also, we're going to be doing a kids' house food truck retreat. That's going to run from five to seven at the rec center. And again, that's October the sixth. The DEA runs a take-back program, which is paid in Connecticut this year. That's going to be October twenty-fourth from ten a.m. to two p.m. here on the parking lot of City Hall. Again, that's going to be the same thing, we'll be adhering to the restrictions for COVID to make sure that everybody's safe and staying within compliance of that. We're going to do the Warner's Warm-Up Coat Collection again this year. We're going to have a collection location at the rec center, our City Hall. And then that starts October twenty-fifth, and it runs roughly through November. I know Councilmember Norris brought up the Kiwanis Senior Lunch-In, officers, police, assistant, that and it was a great turnout, we enjoyed it, doesn't it, with everybody there? Also, we received some complaints about some of the Bridgeton Mars staying open past the ten p.m. Cut-off time that's set by the county health department. Officers have been going around checking if they find them open. They're telling that they're in violation of it. A list is compiled and sent to the county health department. It's on them actually to take it from that point forward. They send out a letter usually giving them a warning and then it goes to a court order. The department can't take any action unless they're satisfied the court order set by the county. So I just wanted to pass that on. If we are, if you see them open, we have a talk with them. Most of them are coming within compliance, but we have some violations or something. And that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Major. Question?
Yeah.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Just real quick, Major, the, is it bars and restaurants or just bars?
Yes, it's bars and restaurants, it's ten p.m. closing.
Okay, thank you.
We also have with us tonight the Assistant Director in Public Work, the Assistant City Engineer, Brian Peterson. Mr. Peterson, good to see you.
Thank you.
Do you have a report for us?
I have nothing to report, I would like to send council to read the, the bids fight tonight for the car strike.
Very good. We did start in on the tipping again, though it started up, right? So residents can put their limbs out there on the street. Or not on the street literally, but close enough to.
Sunblock open?
Pardon?
I'm not sunblocked.
Oh, I thought it was this half, this week. Maybe I was mistaken because I've seen a lot of people in my neighborhood start to put them out there. Okay. Mr. Bookout?
I have nothing to report, Major.
Okay. So I have two items tonight. I took part in a meeting today with EPA Director, Mr. Wheeler, from Washington, D.C., who's in town to announce a project they're doing down at the old Carter Carburetor Facility on Grand Avenue. But he met with myself, the MOMS group, the CAG group, and the Coalition for the Environment to update us and really just get our feedback or statements about what's happening out at Plantville, which the study has continued on that, they're in the engineering phase of it. You haven't seen a whole lot of work because there hasn't been a lot physically out of the site. They are doing a lot back in their offices. They being the firm, I think it's Jacobs Engineering is doing it. For the participating parties who are responsible, pay for the remediation of that. So they are doing it, they are slid a little bit behind schedule, but not much. I was assured by the director that they will do everything they can to meet schedule, and they will continue on. One of their concerns, as I can express, is about when excavation starts out at that site, which may be two years down the road yet, to ensure that no particles get up in the atmosphere and then start being dispersed. And they said they have not developed that yet, if that is a critical concern, they will keep tabs on very closely. So they are working on it. The director was adamant that they are going to get this done and ask for our continued patience and understanding of how we're working forward. So that was a nice meeting with the director, it was very sharp, but at least it wasn't me. Then I also got a note from SSM DePaul today, that they've reorganized a little bit in the SSM system. For the city of Bridgeton, though, it's good news. So they are going to keep at DePaul Hospital, the, and I'm trying to go through the notes here, they will keep it as the trauma center. There will not be trauma over in St. Charles at the old St. Joseph's Hospital, if you know where that is off history. The cardiac surgery center will stay here, and the neurosurgery center will stay here at DePaul. That's quite an investment, DePaul has invested a lot of money into it, but it also says a lot for the city that they are willing to keep those activities here at this hospital. And the trauma center also, and they will also have, because they've had newly remodeled birthing suite at both DePaul and over at St. Joseph's Hospital in St. Charles. One last thing is to remind council that we do have a meeting next Wednesday from ten to three. It will be to discuss budget items and where we're at with certain issues in terms of the finances of the city. That will be ten to three, it'll be out at twenty-seventy-one Exchange Drive, St. Charles, six-three-three-oh-three. That happens to be my business office, and we have a large conference room where we can accommodate up to forty. We're not going to have that many, but we can socially distance in a curve method of that. Unfortunately, Councilmember Luke cannot join us because of previous commitments. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Councilmember Patel, question?
Will we be needing a third council meeting this month?
Pardon?
Will we be needing a third council meeting?
We will, you're right, thank you. We'll do that on Thursday for the approval of a resolution to set the tax rates for the city of Bridgeton for the twenty-twenty fiscal year, or twenty-twenty-one fiscal year. We are waiting for final numbers to come through from St. Louis County on the assessments. Overall, it looks like assessments grew up slightly. Mr. Bookout?
I'm going to mention that at five-thirty on the twenty-fourth.
Five-thirty on the twenty-fourth. Did I hear Councilmember Norris over there?
I need to know the time.
Five-thirty on the twenty-fourth. Further comments or questions?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made in second for adjournments, those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Staining, motion carries. We are adjourned, thank you all very much.